Folks, Happy New Year. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of January 11th, 2022. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Very good. I hope everyone had a safe and healthy holiday. I know that it has been a difficult and stressful time for a lot of folks, figuring out how to gather safely with their loved ones. We have here at Red Hook Town Hall been involved with assisting Dutchess County, New York State, and soon to be the federal government in distributing test kits, COVID test kits. We've done it now on two occasions. We expect to receive another allotment in the next several days. And so you should sign up for notifications on our website if you haven't already, and we can send you word of when the third allotment will be. We expect it'll be distributed here from Town Hall, perhaps as early as Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. So they would put it on the 18th or the 19th. We get a small allotment, first come, first served. It's for those folks who have not yet received a test kit. Again, that's redhook.org. Up at the top, you'll see a banner that says notify me. You can sign up for those topics that you're interested in. Okay, on the screen is the agenda for tonight. It's the first meeting of the year, so we'll be focusing on the beginning work of reorganization. We have, as we did last year, a resolution to authorize exemption renewals that is related to the assessor's work. And what it would do is grant automatic renewals except for when the assessor requires additional information. And we have also, from our Highway Superintendent, the agreement to expend highway monies. Budget is provided for the Highway Superintendent each year, and she determines which roads and which projects she thinks are best suited for the ensuing year. And so that's what we'll be discussing tonight and perhaps approving. We'll also be taking a quick look at the Association of Towns, the annual meeting and their legislative agenda, and maybe quickly just going over some of the resolutions, not making any decisions about whether we're going to support them tonight. We'll tackle that at our next meeting. But just so you understand what collectively local municipalities are calling for from either the state or federal government. And with that said, we will move on to the Supervisor's Report, first meeting of the month. We have the Supervisor's Report. And tonight, we are doing the initial draft of the December report. This is the period beginning December 1st to December 31st. And we start with an opening balance of $7,363,444. We have receipts of $592,000, disbursements of $370,000, and a balance of $7,585,000. We did also just receive for the Town Board members and the folks at home who are familiar with our Community Preservation Fund. That's that real estate transfer fee above and beyond the county median price used for open space preservation. We received for the month of December $62,780 when added to the amount that we have here on. And get to it, hopefully I'll get it to it there. Well, find the page where the total for the year is. But that exceeds $600,000. This rather $800,000 this year for the Community Preservation Fund. It's been a banner year for that fund, and it now exceeds $2.5 million. And we have some ideas on what projects we'd like to use those monies for. Okay, in your packets, you have the variance report as you do each month, and compares the budget lines versus actuals. And we'll be receiving more invoices related to December throughout the month of January. So all of this will get updated as those come in for your review. Are there any questions about the Supervisor's Report? Okay, if not, who would like to make a motion to approve it, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Myself, aye, thank you very much. We also have the Town Clerk's Report. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read off the report for us, please?
Town Clerk's Report for the period of December 1st to December 31st, 2021. Total local shares remitted to the Supervisor, $4,439.47. Amount paid to, total share, amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets for spay and neuter program, $49. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $45. And the amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $72.3. Total county, state county and local revenues, $4,605.50.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. Next, we're going to move on to reorganization. We don't have any public comments, but before we start with our list.
Robert, do we want to move to accept the Clerk's Report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Jacob. Why don't you move to?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the Clerk's Report.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Christine Kane?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
You see, I move so fast sometimes that I forget important steps. So we're on to a reorg. And this is where we talk about who our appointments are, and we're going to start to do that tonight. But I think we should begin, perhaps, by welcoming our newest Town Board member, Julia Solomon, who was successful in the November election. Julia, you want to say hello to the folks at home?
Hi, everyone. I'm Julia Solomon, and I look forward to serving you.
Terrific.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Julia.
And we want to congratulate Christine Kane on her reelection for more years. Thank you very much, Christine, for stepping up.
Thank you to all the voters.
Yeah. Christine, this is, I don't know how many years of you've serving either the town of Red Hook or the village of Tivoli, but we don't have to mention how many, just that they are so many, and we very much appreciate it. And Deanna Cochran was elected for a full term, the Town Clerk, and we are very grateful to you, Deanna. Thank you very much for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.
Deanna, and we see Katie is with us also tonight, Deputy Town Clerk. Thank you both very much for doing such a great job during what is obviously an interesting time in our lives. So with that said, let's begin. Tonight, we're going to get started with reorg. Let's see how far we get. And then we'll pick it up at our next meeting. You know, if we could at least identify, go through the various committees and departments and identify where we know we have vacancies, where we know we have reappointments. We'll do new appointments at our next meeting. And why don't we do that? We'll take up, we do have our reorg resolution. It's number one of 2022, and let's go over that if we could. The meeting dates have typically been the second Tuesday and the fourth Wednesday of each month. The Town Board members, are we still okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. And for the folks at home, we do sometimes, when the second Tuesday and the fourth Wednesday are only eight days apart, we sometimes look to the fifth Wednesday, but we'll send you notice quite a bit in advance of that if we do reschedule them. And from time to time, we have special meetings because we have deadlines or we want to accomplish something that's time sensitive. In fact, we'll be discussing that tonight as well. The official newspaper for the town last year was the Poughkeepsie Journal, and that continues for 2022. The depositories, where we keep the taxpayer monies while we are utilizing them, and that's M&amp;T Bank, Bank of Green County, Key Bank, Petty Cash is an allowance, and that's been established as 500. That's still work, Deanna? We have Deanna on mute.
Yes, it does.
The work's okay. The salaries of each one of the elected officials. The mileage reimbursement rate, this comes directly from the IRS, $0.58 per mile. The undertaking, we do a blanket bond here in the town of Red Hook, and that covers all of us who handle monies, taxpayer funds. Check signing. Everyone is authorized, everyone on the Town Board is authorized to sign checks. And for the folks at home, the way it works is we have internal controls where each one of the invoices are reviewed by Town Board members, three of them before payment is made. Annual financial report, you'll be hearing from me at the end of February, a report of 2021. What you see now is sort of a picture that will crystallize over the course of the next seven or eight weeks. We have our procurement policies, investment policies, ethics policies, and fund balance policies, many of which were updated recently. I might suggest we take some time in the next month or two, and again, take a look at each one of these. For tonight, we can go ahead and of course approve them, but see if there's any changes that we'd like to make to them. And we can, of course, just modify that at a ensuing meeting as well. And so this is resolution number one. Would somebody like to move it?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Was that Christine?
Yep.
Okay, and I'll second resolution number one. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go down to our appointments list. And this is 2021 appointments have been updated, but obviously a lot of updating needs to occur. Let's scroll down here and, you know, just talk about any changes we need to make. We've done the banks, we've done the official newspaper, Safety Officer, Highway Superintendent will continue as that. Disaster preparedness, that's the Supervisor. Emergency interim successors, obviously we have to remove Bill O'Neill's name there. Julia, if you're okay, we're going to insert your name as one of the interim emergency successors. We hope it doesn't come to that where we have to get that far down the list. Christine, we don't have you listed here.
Or Jacob? I'm not listed either.
Okay, let's, why don't we, why don't we list in those order, in that order? We'll do myself, Bill Hamel.
We're gonna keep, we're gonna keep Teresa on there, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think last year, we did, we did Bill as the Deputy Supervisor, and then we decided just one more person, but.
Was fine.
Yeah, well, we can put them all on this here if we want.
I think, I think we should do that, maybe just do myself and then Bill Hamel as Deputy Supervisor, and then Teresa, and then Town Board Members will list as well, if that's okay with you all.
Fine with me.
All good, okay. Receiver of taxes and Registrar of vital statistics. So there, what we're doing as a Town Board is appointing the Town Clerk so that it's commensurate with the term. So that would then mean it would be a four-year appointment, and the same would be true for water rents, issuing agent handicap parking permits. I didn't realize we distinguished between those, I'd forgotten that. Assessor, Charles appointed already till 2025. Building Inspector, we're just, obviously Steve Cole right now. Municipal Code Enforcement Inspector. So let's go back to Building Inspector. We also have Gary Beck, since we have contracted with C3ND, did I say that correctly?
But Mr. Supervisor, the, so the Building Inspector part-time is the Building Inspector. That is the Chief of the Office. The other position that's available is a deputy position, part-time deputy.
Underneath with Bob Fennell.
So Bob Fennell was.
They both have the same title, actually.
No, there's a difference. So the Code Enforcement Inspector is a secondary title under the Building Inspector. In your code, the Building Inspector is defined as the Chief of the Building Department, the Building Office, the Code Enforcement official, as it were. And then there are deputies, one or more deputies who could work under them, which could include Bob Fennell in the past. And then, you know, whoever else, you know, the additional people that you needed to staff that office. And then in the past, you have identified Bob as the CEO, Right zoning enforcement officer. And then you've also identified Steve as a deputy zoning enforcement officer so that he can assist with the enforcement matters as needed.
Yeah.
So it's important to identify those capacities, if that's what you intend to do.
Yeah, okay, so we'll make those changes, and we'll give to Deanna for updating on the list. Director of Purchasing, there really isn't a Director of Purchasing now, so let's get rid of that line.
Well, it's vacant, right?
It's vacant, yeah. And we have to, the title has been removed, so I would suggest that we remove it from the reorg list and not just call it vacant right now. Because the position has been removed, not just the individual. Okay, Panda Representative, we have Marianne Harvey still. I believe that's still the same. Marcus still at Untamed Mark, just a little while ago. He's still quasi-involved with Panda, so he might still be our alternate. I'll try to get more information on that. Buildings and grounds. Okay, it has Teresa and myself there, that's fine. Justice Court clerks, that's fine. Attorneys for the town. We'd like to continue with Rodenhausen, Shaw, and Paula Darrow. And for our town engineers, we have Time Bond and Creighton Manning, as we do in 2021. Supervisor appointments, Deputy Supervisor will now be Bill Hamel, which means Bill gets to stand outside in the freezing weather and hand out COVID test kits. Budget Officers, myself. Secretary, that's vacant right now. Town Historian. Emily Major, I'd like to continue with that. And there is no such thing as an Assistant to the Town Historian or Deputy anyway, but we can create a position called Assistant, I guess. Voting close. Town Clerk appointments, Deanna, any change to Deputy Town Clerk, Deputy Registrar, Deputy Receiver of Taxes?
No, Katie.
Good. John Gardenier is our Deputy Superintendent of Highway. Other Town Employees Officers, Highway Secretary Lori Pierce continues. Assistant Budget Officer Ann Conway, Bookkeeper to Supervisor Ann Conway, Deputy Assessor Part-Time, Deanna Picciano, Transfer Station Operator TJ Hackett, and Solid Waste Attendants. Bill and Paul. Maintenance and Grounds Keepers, I think they are. I don't believe you have Connor anymore. Otherwise, I believe that list is correct. So we'll make that change. Recreation Park and Program Director John Kean. Water meter readers, I believe that's correct, Deanna. Yes, those are our three right now. Is the last two, that's doing meter reading still, or is it just Deanna, Diana? All right, well, we'll check on that. Consultants. Northern Dutchess Hospital Physician, Attorney for the Planning Board, Keenan Bean continues, Water District Operator. Okay, so that's now been changed, there's been a merger, right? So that's C3ND, do I have that right, Prishaw?
I think it was the other way around, right? But in any event, we just reappointed them in, we just did the renewal in December, so they're all set.
Computer Software, Software Consulting Associates. Planner, Green Plan. CPA, Laura Doty, Pollards.
Isn't that Professional Consulting Associates?
Yeah, well, we have. We have both.
Or is that, is that?
That's the municipality folks.
Yeah, you have municipality, right?
Right. And then so PCA and Software Consulting Associates.
Right, right, because you have.
Let's add PCA to that. Police and Court Attendants. Why, there's a common, the village of Red Hook Police Department, Dutchess County Sheriff's, Deputies. Okay. And then. And just a note for the folks at home, because we'll talk, we'll be talking about volunteering. One of the most important things you can do to assist your community is to volunteer. Volunteers are really the engine of this community. And one of the requirements that was made going back now eight years was the Town Board at that time voted unanimously that any and all Town Committee appointees must be residents or at the very least property owners of the town of Red Hook, unless otherwise required by law or town code. We have passed some legislation to enable folks to work in our building department who don't live in this community. But other than that, when it comes to committees and board members, residency is a requirement, or at least ownership of property in the town. Okay, meetings, we discussed that as well. Department Heads and Committee Chair, Ministers, Reports Monthly by Noon on the Friday before the second board meeting of the month. Certainly, they do strive to do that. Annual Committee and Departmental Report shall be submitted by noon on the Friday before the second board meeting of February. And then the CAC has an annual report due on the first, as well as the rec commission. The chain of organizational responsibility as follows. We would then obviously want to swap out Bill O'Neill's name. So let's make that change. Mileage, let's make that change, 58.5. Rate. Town Departments, Chain of Command Department Head, Deputy Department Head, if there is one. Supervisor, and then Town Board Liaison. So Town Board Members, now we get to the decisions we need to make. Who wants to be a liaison to certain departments? Animal Control, Bill Hamel. Can, can we ask you to stick with that?
Yes.
Wonderful. I have Assessor Attorney, Bard College, Bookkeeper. And then we get back to you, Bill, with Building Inspector. You're okay with that? You're, you're okay, okay. Now, Bill O'Neill, the fire companies. Would anybody like to do that? I could do that, actually. I know them all quite well. Why don't I put my name down for that? Jacob Highway, good with that?
Yep, good to keep doing that.
Thanks, Jacob. Christine Purchasing.
Yep.
Now, we go on to three positions or assignments that Bill O'Neill had that we need to reassign. Recycling, who would like to be the liaison to recycling? Okay, don't everybody jump in and watch. I'll, I'll take that one. School District, Julia, what do you think?
I can do that.
That's good. I think you are, in fact, the only one at the moment who has children in the school district. Special Projects Intermunicipal Task Force, well, that's on hiatus, but.
Didn't, didn't Bill O'Neill make the recommendation that they be basically decommissioned or stood down?
I think it was something more along the lines of sabbatical.
Okay.
Really, I thought it was, I thought it was decommissioned also.
Well, let's, let's talk about that. Let's talk about that at another meeting, whether or not you want to, you know, reconstitute that. But assuming we were to at some point, would it make sense for you, Bill Hamel, to be the liaison?
Sure.
I was, I was gonna say, I'd be happy to take that on if that makes sense. I think it, it's a committee that would be valuable to consider whether it makes sense to maybe reimagine what the charge is. And it had been in place for a long time, but I'd be happy to do that unless Bill really wants to.
Free, Jacob.
I don't want to be the sole name there, but I would put my name as a second. I'd be interested in that conversation as well.
Okay. All right, good, and let's look at that again. Let's look at the resolution that established it and who the members were to be representatives of which boards and villages and so on and so forth. So that when you reimagine it, you at least know what, what it was previously. Liaison to the Town Clerk, stick with that. That's okay with Deanna, we are feet apart. Village of Red Hook, well, that was Bill O'Neill. Village of Red Hook well that was Bill O'Neill.
I can do that one if you'd like as a village resident.
Thank you Julia okay. Village of Tivoli with Christine Kane and Bill Hamel. Shall we continue that or make some changes let's see.
I'm fine with it.
Me too.
Alright so we have our committees and boards. And I guess what I would say is before we go ahead and take assignments what I'd like to do I know that it's been very difficult for folks. To have meetings and to work on on projects during the pandemic some of the committees have been just going nonstop full bore. Remotely and others have sort of not been meeting regularly so. What I'd like to do is see if we can start to get those meetings up and running again. You know we have a Zoom account that you know will accommodate. You know lots of meetings so. With that said who would like to replace Bill O'Neill as the liaison to the agriculture and open space advisory? It says board but it's actually a committee.
I'm I'm happy to do it.
Christine. Board of assessment yes.
Can scroll down more.
Board of ethics Jacob you happy to stick with that?
Yes.
CPF Christine.
Sure.
Communications Jacob.
Barrett can stay on with that one.
Complete streets that's one we have to get up and running. Got a grant extension on network. CAC well there's a there's an interesting one what what shall we do folks on that one? Julia who comes to us from the CAC and Jacob who's the liaison.
Yeah so Julia I don't know if you wanted to take this one over or if you wanted me to keep doing it I'm happy to do it but if you're interested I almost know you had more time on the committee.
Yeah so maybe put both of our names for now if you're willing to do that Robert and we can sort it out kind of as we move forward.
If it works for you it works for me.
I would also maybe be interested in staying abreast of what's going on with complete streets since that I think has village implications as well.
You may inherit that one I'm gonna put you next. Okay. Designer review Hamlet. Designer review Hamlet.
I can do that for since.
From one bill to another?
Yeah exactly.
You're in the Hamlets a lot. Disaster preparedness stick with that EDC Jacob.
Yep I can stand with that.
Energy I'd really like to stick with that one if that's okay. Where ethics did we do that we did ethics before ethics Jacob? Board of Ethics and Ethics Board that's clever.
Maybe we need to consolidate that and just.
We're 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 choices of ethical. Okay Greenway and Trails.
I'm happy to stay on there Julia is that anything you wanna? Join on to or?
Um I no not right now I think I'm good.
Okay okay.
Okay LWRP well so there's lost Bill O'Neill there.
Yeah I'm still on it so that's fine.
Thank you Christine Planning Board.
That's fine.
Okay. Recreation Commission it's both myself and you Christine what do you think?
Yeah I'd like to stay on that one.
You would okay. Red church cemetery committee not to be morose who wants to be with the cemetery.
Unless somebody else has a. Desire to do it it's sort of links in with the I get it a lot through the rec commission reports anyway so I'm happy to do that one.
Christine do you want a second for the planning board just a backup?
Sure if you want to that's fine.
Yeah I mean I was on the planning board for three years so I I have some familiarity with what they do.
Yep. Yeah we got it covered Bill you and me.
You might have seen Christine there while you were at the plant. Making quick work of that Saint Margaret's Committee. Are you about to say the same thing? Christine since you got the reports or no you're not. I can do that. Since there's a lot of work associated with the grants and stuff I'm happy to. I don't know if the next one says that Robert McKean is dormant or the senior services committee is permanent but. Why don't we just I'll stick with that it's another committee that we need to get up and running again it was running in the beginning part of the pandemic but not so much anymore. Sister Cities Working Group another one of those committees not not active right now but I'm happy to be the liaison. Tree preservation Jacob.
Yep I'll keep that one.
You want that one okay. Alright Bill Hamel water nobody's gonna take water away from you either.
You gotta keep drinking it.
Save some for the rest of us. Zoning Board of Appeals and zoning review committee so.
I'll take one of the two.
Really okay.
I'll put in that I'm interested in zoning review.
Well I can that solves that solves that doesn't it Bill Hamel for the BA right? Okay. Good. Yeah cuz that's also the same. They see so Julia couldn't do that one anyway. Perfect. Alright shall we start to do a little work on committee appointments?
Um Mr Supervisor before you go on to that you had some appointments that you reviewed in the first part of.
Yeah.
Paperwork here that should really be done with a with a with a motion to approve and a vote by the board. So maybe you could take care of that before you go on to the individual appointments.
Are you talking about the town board appointments?
I am.
I thought.
Yeah. You walked through them but the board needs to vote on them.
Oh yeah yeah no I was gonna vote on everything together but I'm happy if you would prefer for record keeping I'm happy to go ahead and go on the town board appointment. So this would be going all the way through the town departments on page three. And I'll make that motion is there a second?
Second.
Okay all in favor if there's no further discussion Julia Solomon.
Aye.
Jacob Tester.
Aye.
Aye.
So okay so now town board liaisons we've walked through those boarding committees. Committee appointments let's get to that and then we can take a motion to approve whatever work we get through and I think we're gonna. If we can tonight try to get all the way through. Page eleven at least identify what we have open so we can send that word to the community if they're interested in joining while we have available. See how quickly we can get through this. And we are. For here committee appointments committee members are expected to attend two thirds or more scheduled meetings. Failure to do so and this is language leftover from another time may result in removal from the committee you know there are times when. It's just not possible for people for health reasons or otherwise to make two thirds of the meetings but that's what we'd like to see. And for folks who are interested in joining one of our committees you will love it you'll get to meet a lot of terrific people. The commitment is generally a monthly meeting some of these committees meet more infrequently than that. And we are doing all meetings remotely right now. Okay agriculture and open space advisory. We do need to. Read up some of these folks here and. What I see is. What I can tell we don't have let's see any vacancies unless somebody wants to drop off. So.
Well do you want me to reach out to Mary Ann and and have her poll the members?
Yeah would you please?
Yep.
We can get that and then you know they may want to establish a new chair. But Mary Ann's not willing but would you ask her if she's willing to continue as chair?
Yes I will.
And we'd like to get them up and running and meeting again a lot has changed in two years because of the pandemic. And so we'd like to hear from the farmers what's working what's not working what they need. Assessment Review Board well there's only only bad news there which is Carl Dow and after I don't even know how many years. But perhaps as many as thirty years has sent in his letter of resignation he's had a lot of personal family obligations he needs to attend to. And so we can't thank Carl enough for all his work on the ARB. But what that means is that we are in desperate need of getting a new member or two to that board. These are five year appointments there are five members. For the folks at home what this board does is adheres. Complaints and assessments. Homeowners and works to make determinations whether or not. The assessors. Valuation for the property should change. And so. We know that we have two vacancies there now Jane Greenblatt. Has resigned called out and leaves us with Zinsky probably. Not we're missing one we're missing one.
That's it.
Let's review this okay. Next up CPF. There again do we want to check with Mary Ann and see who? Is interested remaining we have.
Have to scroll down again.
Yeah seven members one two three so we have one vacancy there. We can reach out. But we had Marina on there for a while. And that was on a okay so CPF you want to reach out on that one Christine as well okay thanks communications. When your appointments somebody like to reach out to Sarah.
Yeah I can reach out to Sarah I talked to her a little bit about this last year looks like we haven't done you know the appointments. Recent time it seemed like it was it had kind of fallen off but I can see maybe if. And I'm just looking at this list and I've seen senior services hasn't been active. Maybe wanted to recruit some extra people I'm also wondering whether I don't know if there's. I guess I just don't have a sense for whether seven members is necessary for this committee or not. Whether it needs to be maybe right sized a little bit given that it looks like there's been at least one vacancy that's been open since 2017.
Well actually Vicky sent in her letter of resignation quite a while ago I think right at least on the senior services. Let's check in with her to see if she wants to remain on communications or not but yeah I think that's a good point Jacob. Does this committee really need to at this point when it was established and we were doing the website? So on and so forth although there will be some work we'll be taking a look working with Panda and maybe different formatting. But yeah.
But yeah I'll connect with Sarah and have a conversation kind of about you know what what makes sense for this now that the website's been established and you know maybe we need to kind of reconsider the purpose of the committee.
Okay. Well there's complete streets. You and I will talk about that and we'll see these are people who were at one point in time interested. But it only beginning work on a draft that I think had prepared policy statement but let's talk about that let's see if we can get that up and running again. CAC. Okay so. Now two vacancies that we.
And I know we received one set of materials I don't know if that was sent to the board or only to the CAC. But I can make sure that we have those for one person who was interested who's been attending the meetings for some time now. But I think that would still leave us with one other vacancy. Yeah I guess yeah it's just just Julia's right. That makes sense.
Okay. So let's identify whether we have. Well we certainly have an opening there so we can let folks know alright design review committee to your appointments. Chris Emily Will Tatum Jeff Carter Tiffany. Who's doing design review that's Bill Hamel right?
Yep.
Bill give you Chris Gilbert's contact information if we could ask him to check in with all those members and. And see what their interest level is and whether or not there's a vacancy. Disaster preparedness I can check in with Taipei. I know some of the folks have. Some of the names have changed for example Perry Sheldon retired from the River School District so I know there's gonna be some updating. And we'll see who the fire companies want to. Assign. So I can take care of that one. EDC. Jacob EDC.
Yeah I know that all the people on this list regularly attend the meetings there's a couple that are up this year so.
So Jacob you know I I did want to take a moment of the board's time to discuss some concerns I have with the EDC. Based on the work that they did last year. And sort of how they've transformed themselves from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. And I I'm putting this out there for discussion. You know one of the things development and we've talked about this. Is their middle name and in this context it generally means being forward thinking. And trying to figure out where you want a town to go how you want to get there three five ten fifteen twenty years having a plan. For for long term economic stability and growth. And the last year what I saw with the EDC and this is gonna sound harsh but I really feel this is that they seem more akin to a hired lobbying firm than an actual arm of the government. You know the work of government has to be fact based it has to be objective and it has to be measured and when we took up the issue of regulating short term rentals. You know I saw EDC making communications to us verbally and in writing that had you know unsupported hyperbolic assertions. And they weren't fact based and they weren't measured and you know when you work for the government even in a volunteer position. There are some special obligations that come with that and the first and the most important one is that you're required to put the interests of the public before yourself. And I know that at least four of the members of the EDC are people who ran short term rentals three of them were in here in Red Hook that I know about and I know about that because. Those folks came before the intermunicipal task force meetings and talked about their operating short term rentals here in Red Hook. And so you know that caused me a moment to pause and be a little concerned about their objectivity and before. And before we adopted our laws, I wanted to get an idea whether it was just more than those four. So I sent an email to all the members and I copied all the town board members asking for everybody to identify whether they have done short term rentals, manage them, you know, operate them here in Red Hook or anywhere else. I got one response. Which was disappointing. And then I sent another email to the chair, asking her to please remind the members about my request, which was an official request as a, as a, you know, as a member of this legislature. And I still didn't get a response. And, you know, at best, that's disappointing. And my sense is that any EDC member that is running STR here in Red Hook, you know, they had a choice to do the ethically right thing, which was sit this issue out. But they didn't. And, you know, I raised, and this isn't me raising a new issue. This, I raised this issue a year ago when we appointed one of the members in our early February 2021 meeting about a person who actively and still does actively run an STR here in Red Hook and also operates an online news blog that has been reporting extensively on the issue. And I said back then that I thought that person really needed to recuse themselves, you know, from participating in these matters as it relates to the development of STR regulations. You know, due to the obvious immediate and ongoing financial conflict of interest it presented. And that didn't happen. And I don't know how anybody who could run an STR in town here could be objective about this. But more importantly to me was, and this is what concerns me, is, you know, how and why did they let that happen at the EDC? They have choices to make. They could have, they could have parsed this out in a way that was, at least the optics of it could have been better. And so it raised three questions that I want to raise to the board to think about. One is, is the town's ethic law in our, in our code, is it adequate to address these kinds of conflicts of interest? And I'll ask counsel to weigh in. I read, I reread it three or four times. And it seems to me that the only people that are really beholden to the ethics law are people who have to file an oath of office. Those are people on the planning board, zoning board of appeals, the assessment review board and such, ethics board, there's very few. All the other positions that that ethics law in the town code is really appears to be more like guidance. And it doesn't really have, there's no consequences or accountability for violating it. And I put that out to the town board, whether we need to look at that and whether we need to make some adjustments to our ethics law to make sure that, you know, we can deal with those things. The second issue I wanted to raise is that, you know, is the EDC properly charged with a well defined mission and focused objectives and goals? In my two years here on the board, I haven't, you know, it's easy when you're on the planning board because applications come before you and you have to deal with them. This is a more long term kind of issue where you're trying to solve, solve problems and come up with solutions. And I'm not so sure that we, the town board have created a well defined mission for them to work from. And lastly, I do want to raise an option which may not be popular, but I would want to consider hiring an outside town planner, a professional town planner to come in and do a top to bottom review of our town with an eye towards long term economic stability and growth. And then have the EDC, have them work on, make it their charge to try to implement those recommendations. And until then, have them temporarily decommissioned. I know I'm just one voice on this board and I know you guys can all vote me down. But I think, I think everybody who's witnessed what happened this past year, just read the letters that they've sent us. It should be a pause for concern, you know, with, with the way they behave themselves, you know, before the town board. I'm pretty disappointed and I wanted to put that out there and I'm open to discuss it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Well, you, I can only speak for myself. You've given us some, some stuff to think about. I'd like some time to, to consider those suggestions, especially the outside planner. May not be a bad idea.
Yeah, I just like to add that I think that actually I think that's a very good idea. And I think that there might be the possibility of some funding coming through that might be something that we could apply for to support that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think that that piece of it is definitely really appealing to me. I think that that is something that'd be really helpful is to give maybe a little bit more direction to this committee. I do think that, you know, from being in the meetings, I think they understand their charge as supporting local businesses. And I think that that is something that should be a focus of the committee. But I also think that what Bill was talking about previously, like just now about, you know, being forward thinking and thinking about, you know, planning for the future is really important. And I think that's something we're having a planner would be a really valuable resource. I think for the town more generally, but also for this committee to have something to work on because they think there is a lot of energy. I think there's something that, you know, the people that are involved in this committee meet every week and talk about things that are happening in the community, think about things I think will help the community. I know there was conflict about short term rentals. I guess I don't know who else. I know, I know one individual who operates short term rentals in the town, but I don't know who else on the committee may have. That was never a part of any of the meetings that I was a part of, at least that people were talking about operating something besides the one person I think we all know.
There are three others. I'm not going to name them, but I, but I, but they came to inter municipal task force meetings. And actually in a very helpful way, because they came as operators to help explain how it works. So from a, from a, you know, an informational perspective, it was helpful for the task force. But knowing that those four individuals were operating them here really caused me a lot of concern about how objective that could they really be? Because their financial interests are at stake.
Yeah, and I guess that I think that with that part of it, right? I guess I don't know if they were still operating them, right? But I think that operating one to begin with, like you think that there's some value that's being provided either to yourself or to your community. And I, and I think that this is something that there was a lot of conflict between that committee and, you know, the inter municipal task force and I think people on the board. And I'm hopeful that now that that matter has been resolved, that, you know, we've passed the law, that, you know, sort of that tension will be relieved a little bit. And like I said, I think that your idea of having, you know, something to give to the board or give to the committee to, to focus on would be really helpful. I think in the interim, you know, there are other things that the committee has, you know, worked on in terms of, you know, communicating with businesses and getting, you know, messages about, you know, different opportunities for grants and things like that. They think can still be really valuable. So I'd kind of be opposed to, you know, decommissioning it or something like that. I think that, you know, you know, I think we can give them the direction without necessarily putting on a full pause until that happens. So I think they can still continue working on things. But if there are specific things that you think would be good to communicate to this committee, you know, things that you'd like them to be working on, Bill, I'd be happy to communicate that. Or if you'd like to, you know, attend some meetings that actually happen on Wednesdays at eight thirty. So I don't know what your schedule looks like, but they happen over Zoom. So I can make sure you have that link if you'd like to, you know, provide some of the feedback directly or, you know, share other ideas for things they could be working on. Or if you want to just communicate that to me, that's fine, too. I can, I can pass, pass that along. But yeah, I do, I do think that with, with this one in particular, because part of, you know, being on this committee, I think, for a lot of the people on the committee, it's about the things that they do in the community to support economic development or to participate in the economy. So there's always going to be some things that definitely have some overlap with a personal interest and the interest of the town. I think that everybody operates a business in the town thinks that their business is important to the town. Even if it's, you know, important to them as well. So I think that's something that is probably true for a lot of committees that we have as well, that a lot of people, you know, utilize something or engage in something or have some specific knowledge because they work on something. And, you know, your point about the ethics code kind of opting or, you know, not including those people in terms of the ethics obligations, I think is something we should consider. And maybe, you know, we need to, we need to think about the way that that language is written. Because I, because I agree, I think there, there are certain things where if you have like a serious financial interest and you're advocating on behalf of something using the authority or the name of a committee, that that's something that, you know, should be avoided, should be forbidden. But like you said, I don't think that the ethics code currently does that. So I do think it's a good thing to revisit. So that's something that, you know, like you said, I, I, I think that I agree with you on a lot of what you said, but I think there are some other things that, you know, I wouldn't necessarily, you know, do it this time at least.
And just on the ethics code, you know, my view about that is it has applicability across the board. So if someone's on the CAC and they are a major shareholder in a company that make, does some kind of new technology for recycling and then they come and pitch that to the town, clearly that's a financial conflict of interest. And, you know, I worked for the federal government for twenty five years and even volunteer employees for the feds, they're called as special government employees. They're bound by the same ethics laws that all federal employees are and, and the punishments are rather harsh. And they do that so that the confidence of the, of the people is in the people that are serving them. So I, you know, I don't know if it's an oversight or whether it was by design, but I do think based on what happened in this instance, I think we should be looking at that again and saying, are there some things that we can do to try to prevent that? Because it, it doesn't look good for the town. That's all I'll say.
Yeah, and that's something that, you know, I tried to impress upon the members of the committee as well as to, you know, if they had a real opposition, like to speak as a public, as a private citizen.
That's right.
That's something that, you know, we're not taking away from anybody. You can serve on something and disagree with the town and what actually the board is taking or committee has taken, taking and express that. I tried to impress that upon people. And I think that some of that did gets taken as a message, you know, later in the year, last year, that was something that, you know, I did communicate some of, I think some of the frustration we've talked about previously in terms of like the way that the committee was acting. So the, my impression of the way that the board has been acting of the committee, sorry, keep mixing up, the way the committee has been acting since that has been to focus more on being productive and has been more, if people have specific things that they're concerned about, to speak as private citizens. I've definitely seen that in, in the minutes for, for things, you know, the latter part of the year. So I think that's a part of why I'm, you know, optimistic that, you know, there can be some more productive work happening. And, you know, I think avoiding some of the, the things that you're concerned about that that I wouldn't take the drastic step of kind of, you know, decommissioning the committee in that time. That's, that's kind of my radar is I think that people
I appreciate, I appreciate that.
For the community. It's not, I don't think that it is, you know, I don't think every issue is going to feel the same way that that one felt.
And listen, I, I know all the people on, on the committee and I think they're all very smart, very talented, very capable and successful. And I think that they have the combined skill sets to achieve, you know, find solutions and move forward. And, and I didn't, I appreciate you saying they have the energy. So I'd hate to see that get squandered and, and lost when we have, you know, a vital group. But I would really like to see it channeled in a direction that is more focused towards what the town board is looking for, you know, rather than them themselves. Thank you.
I think we could also take a look at yeah, whether we should just have the code of ethics apply to all volunteer positions within the town or whether we want to continue to limit to only certain sort of policymaking boards. I don't see any reason why it couldn't be expanded to everybody because I would hope that everybody's intent on in volunteering on a committee with other subject it might be is to, you know, have the best results for the whole town, whatever the goal of, you know, implementing the goal of that committee. So I, we can certainly have a discussion on it. I don't really see any reason why it can't be expanded. The oath of office and the ethics training can't be expanded to include everybody who volunteers on a committee. And that's probably a very helpful, at the least refresher course for people who've heard it before. But for all new folks can hurt. And I, but I do think it's also important to impress upon folks that some, some committees, it is much harder to try and become involved or express an opinion as I not a member of that committee than others. So that is also something that often sometimes I think has to be taken into consideration. And, you know, people have to understand.
And I know that at ethics board meetings, especially towards the latter half of the year, we discussed doing ethics trainings. For everybody who's subject to the ethics codes, there'll be everybody in this meeting, I think. And then also, you know, if we're thinking about expanding it, I think that'd be good to get them involved in that conversation once we decide to do anything like that. Because that'll be another piece of it is if we want to do some training for other committee and board members, that would be something we'd be asking for a little bit more involvement from them for.
Well, that's a good segue, Jacob, to, to saying that, you know, we might consider or something that's been considered over the last few years is trying to get some training sessions for many of our committees and boards, have our consultants, attorneys, so on and so forth, whether it's ethics or planning board. I know we have a couple of new planning board members, ZBA. Training sessions can be really helpful. We can ask our, our attorneys whether or not they can organize something and, you know, can be done, done over Zoom and very convenient. And I think very helpful and get folks off on, you know, solid footing and a good trajectory as well. So let's consider that for as many committees or boards as, as possible, I think, right?
I don't think it hurts to have the training, even if you're not, you know, fully subject to the law. Doesn't hurt to say, be considering the ethics of what you're doing.
Exactly. Okay. All right, energy committee, I can take care of that. I think everyone is, oh, well, everybody is already appointed to that committee. It's through 2022. There's no staggering on that committee. So we might want to look at that next year. I don't believe anybody is dropping off of that committee. And there's our ethics board. We do have a vacancy and an interested person. Perhaps after their next meeting, we can go ahead and consider that recommendation for appointment.
I know that we, we've, we've had the, the letter of interest and the resume from the individual who, you know, was interested in this vacancy. I know the ethics board was hoping to have the seat filled prior to the next meeting so they'd be able to start the year off and, you know, upcoming matters to have a full board for that. So I was actually going to propose appointing the person that we've received them with heroes for.
Yeah, I would just ask you if you wouldn't mind, Jacob, if we could hold off on that till the next meeting, till they finish with whatever business is in front of them. I understand they haven't finished with any referrals to them. And go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I, I thought that we were in a period between the end of a previous matter and the start of another one. So like they hadn't started the other one because they were hoping to not, well, I think it was like a timing thing, but also they were hoping to have somebody before the next meeting to start on the next.
Oh, on the next matter?
Matter, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I, what, were the materials for that person circulated? I don't think I saw them.
I think so, back, back a ways, I think.
Yeah, I think they were circulated in November, I want to say. So it's been a couple of months and I know that would be before Julia joined the board.
I was gonna say, so Julia wouldn't have seen that anyway. So I, I think I would be uncomfortable to vote on that.
I would not feel prepared to vote on that right now. Just because I haven't seen the materials.
Yeah.
So could, could we?
Be in that camp as well.
Yeah, can we circulate those before the next meeting? Because I do, we, we have had the materials for a few months now. And I think it would be, you know, important to, you know, whether there's somebody who's interested in doing something and there's a board who's interested in having that person. I think it's really important to do that in a timely manner.
Yeah, great. Okay. Greenway and Trails. Christine, you still have that one? Right. And at last we left.
There's already been, I think there's been a change in the chair of that one already, right? Didn't we prove that one?
Right, so I think
Lisa now.
Lisa now because Howie resigned. We should, we should do a motion so that they can, she can call a meeting. Do you want to do that motion to make Lisa, to reappoint Lisa? Well, we can tackle again the rest of the committee members because everybody's a holdover. Members because everybody's a holdover.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to um, reappoint Lisa to the committee and also appoint her as chair of the committee.
In that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
I.
Bill Hamel.
I.
Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Thank you very much, okay. Um, and then Christine, um, if you could reach out, reach out to Lisa and have her check the other members.
Yeah.
Okay, and then uh, task force, we're gonna. Hold off on doing anything there, but Bill, if you want to give it some. Or Jacob, if you want to give it some thought rather, or maybe, maybe the two of you think about it, one is a former member and one is the new lay. And come back to the board and. Let us know what you think. L W R P, you all are in the midst of that. Bill O'Neill will have to be removed.
Um, actually, we've, um, we've checked with the department state and he can stay on as a. Legal advisor, sort of, so, so he can stay on the committee and he said he would stay if we want him to.
But he's not a resident of the town.
Yeah, he's not a resident, so you can certainly have him. You know, there's no, uh, again, for the folks at home, there's nothing prohibiting anybody from. Attending.
Right.
Ending their own public meetings. So if Bill would like to attend or be a consultant. Um, that's fine, but it cannot be a committee member because he does not. Fulfill those requirements. Now, if you want to change that requirement, of course, we can do that, but it has to be true for, for everyone, not just for. Our beloved, okay?
Yep, and if anybody, we, um, we can have more people in that. If anybody else is interested in joining, we're going into the new next section. So it's a good place for somebody to come on board if they want.
Okay, very good. Uh, planning board. So we have a letter of interest there as well. Um, for the planning board, we have two vacancies.
Um, actually, I have someone else who's interested too, so he's giving us some information.
Great, okay. Very good, so we'll hear more from. Uh, both you and the chair when, when the chair has had a, a chance to interview that person. Uh, rec commission. I think there are some changes to that, right? Or will be some changes to that, Christine.
Yeah.
Um, but we can get together with Doug and, and uh, go over that. Okay, Red Church Cemetery Committee. All right. We'll have to obviously appoint a new chair, so. Um, let me work with John and see, see what we can come up with there on Red Church. Saint Margaret's. There we need to start from scratch. Because that committee has been defunct for quite some years now. Senior set of senior services, so I will reach out. Oh, boy. Yeah. This is not, oh, it is up to date. It has the honor on there. Okay, ten members plus municipal representation to your point. Okay, so I'm going to tackle that one as well. Back to you during the next meeting, see where we stand with that. Uh, Sister Cities, that's been defunct. Uh, in fact, Jeff Levine has moved from the area. So was Erica. I think, I think we should remove this committee for right now. We could always reconstitute it. It's been defunct for several years. Why don't we go ahead and do that? And if we, if we reconstitute, if we do. Let's make that change, Diana, if we could. Um, tree preservation committee. Members, very active committee. Um, do we want to check and see if there are any changes, proposed changes there?
Yeah, I can check. It's my sense that everybody will want to continue.
Yeah. I imagine so, Jacob, thanks. Uh, water ward. We have one vacancy there. At least one vacancy.
Do you want me to check with Hank?
Please. Z B A, so we have um, an, an important uh, board. We have. One vacancy. And two alternate vacancies. And so possibility of uh. One individual looking at also the planning board. So we'll, we'll take Z B A, but. We can reach out to folks and see if there's other members of the community interested in serving on the zoning board of appeals. And for the folks at home, this N B A here's request for relief from the zoning. So we will take that up. I don't know.
Robert?
As well, yeah.
Did you check with Kate? Because if her appointment expired. At the end of the year, did you speak with her about?
Going to remain, so let's, why don't I do a motion to uh, reappoint Kate. Carocasus as the chair. It is a five-year appointment as a member, but the chair. Personship is only an annual appointment. And so I'll make a motion to reappoint her for a term ending in twenty twenty six. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
I.
Bill Hamel.
I.
Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Now, a second motion to reappoint Kate as the chairperson of the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
Zoning Review Committee, okay, so this is a committee that has not met.
Are we going to vote on that?
Would you vote?
I vote all in favor. I.
I.
That's Christine Kane, Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Tell them moving along, okay. Zoning Review Committee, a committee that needs to get back up and running. Um, you see that this was established. As particular C B A representation, Z E O, C, C A C. I can open space, C D C, much like the I T F. Um, designated representation, so. Julia, would you uh, get with Susan Simon, please? I can give you contact information. And let her know that we um. Want to reach out to the members and make sure they're still interested in serving.
Sure.
And we make the change on the liaison, okay. Very good, well, I think we got through and now we can now amend our list and, and uh. We'll send out word on where the vacancies lie and solicit. Folks in the community, see if they're interested in joining one of these committees and then put them in touch with the. The chairs of the various committees and boards and um, see if they uh, think it's a, a good fit. All right, um. The second item on the agenda. Tonight is a resolution to authorize exemption renewals. And Chris Shaw, just to make sure you're still paying attention to the meeting, could I ask you? To get the town board members the sixty-second version of why we're doing this again this year.
So, um, last year during COVID, uh, the beginning part of that, um. It was decided that uh, at a state level that uh, they wanted to streamline the ability to. Qualify for exemptions for um, those who had received the exemptions in a prior year. Um, would limit the number of people who needed to come into town halls and um, just make things easier in general. Uh, so there was this, there was a uh. Uh, an executive order uh, issued again in December. That um, authorizes the municipality to adopt a resolution. Um, again, uh, allowing those exemptions to be granted on the basis of um, a prior qualification. Um, unless that there are, you know, there's a fact situation that the assessor can evaluate that, that um. Uh, causes her to believe that they need to refile such as, you know, she's had a sale come through for the property or something like that, right? She gets those reports on a regular basis. Um, so this resolution would essentially continue the same situation that you've had last year. Is that short enough?
That's, that's terrific and in particular, it's designed to protect some of our most uh, potentially most vulnerable citizens you can imagine. Um, we have our seniors coming in with renewal paperwork. Um, uh, that's not something that we want to. You know, risk their health over, and so as Chris uh, articulated succinctly. Um, this will allow for that automatic renewal. With the exception of when we believe the circumstances have changed. So this is resolution number two. Authorizing real property tax renewal procedures for seniors and persons with disabilities and limited income permitted by executive order. Eleven point one and I so moved, is there a second?
I'm a second.
Whoa. I, I think Christine came, I've gotten in there, my notes. Um, any uh, further discussion? If not, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
I.
Bill Hamel.
I.
Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Okay, and we will, uh, we'll do a news alert on this. Just to update the public. All right, uh, next up on the agenda, we have our annual agreement. To expand highway monies, this is agenda item number three. Section two eighty-four, uh, for the folks at home, when the town board approves a budget appropriates a certain amount of dollars. For the improvement of our uh, roadways and then um, the highway superintendent then. Um, goes about the work of determining how best to use those funds. And on which roads and uh, which type of improvement to grow and so. Uh, for the folks at home, just so you know, uh, the highway superintendent is uh, proposing. To do some improvements on. Uh, Aspen Wall Road, North Drive, leading to Trow Boulevard. Manor Road, approximately about a mile. Um, with an estimate of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's asphalt. Um, uh, bearing width between twenty and twenty-two feet, two and a half inches of thickness. Um, there is uh, also a proposal to. Uh, do a chip seal, which is a process that um, lengthens the life of the roadways. And that is on Hateman Hill Road out east. Um, leading to Route one ninety-nine, approximately two and a quarter miles long. And that is a quarter inch thick. And then um, on Kelly Road leading to nine G and Wells back, Kelly Road. To also do uh, chip seal. And uh, the expenditures for um, both of those roadways add up to an additional seventy thousand dollars. In total, um, and so these funds uh, uh, compare. And fit into our budget for twenty twenty-two. It will be interesting to see. How the federal monies um, that have been approved. Uh, for infrastructure might impact the resources available to us and we might be able to. Uh, more work related to uh, roadways. Okay, um. Any questions about this, folks? We'll need to get uh, two copies to our highway super at some point. This month, it's still a little early, obviously, there's going to be. Several months before the plants are open again, but uh. This will allow Theresa to uh, prepare the bidding documents so that we can line up. Focus to do the work as soon as practicable. Okay, um, so would somebody like to move to approve the two eighty-four agreement?
Okay, so moved.
Thank you. All right, this is the resolution number three to approve highway expenditures. Moved by Christine, seconded by Jacob. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, Bill Hamel?
I.
Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Myself, I, okay. Continuing on to our agenda. We are now at the part where we're talking about our annual meeting. Of the Association of Towns for the folks at home. Your elected representatives have continuing education, much like you probably did in your professions and so. Uh, one of those is the um, annual meeting of the Association of Towns where just about every township. Uh, comes together typically in New York City. Two or three day conference, um, many classes. Um, and uh, timely topics. It happens typically on President's Weekend. It's going to be interesting to see whether or not they hold it in person this year or not, or. Or whether it's going to be remote, uh, as it typically. Has been during uh, well, at least the last pandemic year. One of the things that the board needs to do is establish who will be the designate me. To vote on matters. For the town and that is typically the town supervisor and if you would be. Fine enough to, once again, uh, appoint me to do so, I will be. Um, attending. Especially if it's remotely, uh, but if not, I will still attend. And ninety-five in hand. So uh, that's the certificate of designation, let's get to that. Would like to move to designate the town supervisor to vote on?
Don't move.
So, okay, thank you, Bill Hamel, second with Christine Kane, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
I.
Thank you very much, okay, so designate, so. For the folks at home, what that means is that there's one of us that's a voting member. Each year, the Association of Town gathers information and viewpoints from the municipalities on what they can do. As far as their uh, advocacy for either state or federal government. And what type of platform they develop and what uh, propositions they'd like to put forward. Here are um, the titles of those uh, proposals and. One in particular has my eye, as you can imagine, but let's go through them. Um, preserve and support home rule, highway bridge. And transportation funding, broadband, uh, strengthen state and local government partnerships by restoring state revenue sharing and increase funding. Allow municipal deposits at credit unions, created dedicated funding program for Bill Hamel. Municipal water and sewer infrastructure. Number seven, provide all towns with the authority to set speed limits on local roads. So if you recall. Um, there was a lot of discussion on um, changing s- speed limits in. There was a lot of discussion on changing speed limits in College Park. For example. And we worked with DOT and DOT said, well, these are small roads and we're not inclined to. Increase rather decrease the speed limits. They're small tangents. We don't believe that people can. Really get up to a very high speed on the small roadways. And we rejected that argument, but we're at their mercy. And so I had. Suggested to you last year that we take a different approach, which is we advocate. To try to get the law changed so that we would have the ability to make these determinations on our very local roads. In particular subdivisions where there's not a through road. It wouldn't affect commerce, for example. So I was very pleased to see that, you know, enough municipalities. Spoke up on the issue and there was advocacy. From me on Duchess County Townships and Ulster County was very vocal and other municipalities. This is a common problem. Where local municipalities can't make these educated decisions for their residents. And we're at the mercy of the state. Number eight, reform inequities and the real property tax cap formula that has not been an issue for us because we haven't raised taxes. At all, the tax rate in the last six years, but but for other municipalities, that is an issue. And amend open meetings law to permanently allow for remote meetings. So we're doing a remote meeting now. And that authority has been here for some time, but. Prior to the pandemic, but prior to the pandemic, you had to list all the locations of the people that were meeting remotely and make them. Make those locations available to the public. And of course, that that doesn't quite make sense if you have, for example, three town board. Members meeting at town hall, but one, one isn't feeling, you know. Up to speed, a fourth member not feeling well and wants to stay home but participate. Remotely, they would then need to have their location open to the public if the public wanted to go to that location, of course. You know, that that sort of defies common sense as long as the public has an opportunity to attend the usual. Location for public input, you know, we would imagine that remote meetings should be. Should continue and and can increase participation as as some of you have mentioned. At our last meetings. That said, I understand with Panda may have had some technical difficulty with their live stream again this evening. They're working on that, but you know, people can, can of course. Join the Zoom for tonight's meeting and for future meetings. Okay, so let's look at these resolutions. I'm not gonna ask you to. Sorry, I'm just getting a message here from Panda and Panda says now that their live stream is still working, so. Or has been working tonight. Well, we'll have to verify that. All right. Resolution number one, preserve and support home rule. And this is sort of a. A generic resolution here, talking about the town's ability. To make its own decisions. Resolution number two, again, supporting additional or increased funding for highway, bridge and transportation funding. Talking about the level of responsibility, eighty-five percent of. New York's roads and bridges are local roads and bridges. That may not be the case for us here in the, in the town and villages of Red Hook. Because we do have quite a few state highways and and county roads, but. Suffice it to say, we're talking about additional funding and. We, they recount the increases, recent increases in. In the chips money and the other programs, C W R. And capital plan funding five years out for the folks at home when the state makes decisions. About where it's going to spend its funds, it develops a five-year plan. And so you can see whether or not. Something is going to. Take place in your community. And if it's not on that list, you know, you've got quite a few years before. The state will provide some funding. We, we asked them about, for example, Route nine G and Kelly. And whether or not they would be able to. You know, help us with that intersection and make it possible that not only automobiles, but bikers and pedestrians someday could. Could cross. And they said, you know, you might be looking at ten years if you're asking for state funding. So just to give you some idea. How long it can take to get on the state's list. Okay. We're talking about broadband and that's something, as you know, I've been working with Spectrum. They are closing. Some of the voids in our community. And we still have a few more to go, but let's hope we can finish that off in the next couple of years. Revenue sharing and this relates to the AIM program, the aid and incentives to municipalities, which is basically been the same for. I don't know how many years now. So one of, one of the quirky things about. Where we can hold taxpayer funds. Is that we are not allowed to deposit funds into our local credit unions and savings. Banks. And Chris Shaw, would you like to tell the public why we're not allowed to do that?
Yes. Why? Well, you mean, the short answer is that for a long time. Municipalities have been very limited in the kinds of things they can invest in. Because there's been a history of municipalities investing in. Different types of investments that turned out to cause them loss of capital. And so the, the list of authorized investments are very conservative. There's been a recent. Opening up of that to an extent. So this would be a further opening up of that opportunity to invest in. Credit union, the savings banks, but I don't, I don't know what associations of town. I haven't studied what their proposal is in this particular case. In terms of their. What would cause them to be secured? I'm assuming they'd have to still be secured in the way that bank deposits are have to be secured. Bank deposits have to be secured by, by the banks, by deposit of funds. At least a hundred percent of the amount of the municipal deposit.
Right, right. So this speaks to the National Credit Union Insurance Fund. And the argument is that if, if you're utilizing your local credit union, it's more likely that those dollars will stay in your community. The sixth resolution is creating a dedicated funding program for municipal water and sewer infrastructure. I think the village of Red Hook is a really good example of, you know, why we need to. Have, have dedicated funding. For water infrastructure. By the time these projects make it to show already. The cost of them in many cases is quite a bit above the initial estimates. And so the prevalence of funding so that they can be done before costs escalate. It really speaks to the issue. All right, let's see what else we have. The roads again, as we spoke about. Reducing it. There are some communities that have a certain population or they're near. A community that has a certain population that get to make these determinations. And then there are communities like ours that are not empowered to do so. So this would mean the traffic law. You know, one of the other things is that speaks to the lowest level twenty-five miles an hour. Right now, the threshold is a population of fifty thousand. Modifying the tax cap, I won't go into the specifics of it. But it's how the calculations can be amended to. You know, allow for. Certain special circumstances, taxes, properties, pilots, so on and so forth. Okay, and then there's the last one, which is to. Permanently allow for remote meetings. Yeah, and, and as long as the, the public can. View and listen to the proceedings in real time. Providing greater flexibility and having hybrid meetings. Where both members and the public can either be here in person or remotely participate. And the, the large body of thinking out there in the. Municipal world is that a hybrid model. Might work best for public participation. And the authority to hold these remote meetings. During the pandemic certainly has been extended to this month and is likely to be extended again with the. Outbreak of Omicron. New York State. Okay, that's it for the nine legislative items. So town board members, if you would. Give them some thought so that we can vote on them, which ones we wanna support. And which ones we may wanna reconsider. And they also have their list of tentative conferences. This is always a short list and it gets expanded. You know, as the conference approaches, in fact, I think I may be doing one again, presenting one again. This year. Okay. That's all I have on that. Any questions about A O T matters? Okay, if not, the last item we have is just a bit of correspondence. We received a letter, something we knew about already, is that the town of Rhinebeck. Is going to be exiting our shared service with the mini excavator because they've decided to. Use some grant funds to purchase their own mini excavator. And so the three highway superintendents will then have to figure out what to do. About. You know, sharing the equipment and the costs, the maintenance costs. It's already paid for the piece of equipment that was paid for by a grant. But just to know that we have, hopefully, depending upon the resolution, we'll have a greater. Greater opportunity to take advantage of that mini excavator. And so there's correspondence that was sent to us. Okay. Very good. That is all I have for this evening. Oh, and one other matter we did. Received more correspondence from the highway super just today. On the plow truck. And so I would say just stay tuned if. All the ducks can be lined up in the next few days. So to speak, we may need to call a very brief special meeting to authorize the first purchase of the truck that's been. Identified. As being on the lot and maybe suitable for our needs, so. Town board members, just stay tuned. We might have to have a very quick approval meeting next week, maybe midweek or so. If we can get all the information we need. Okay, that said, anybody have anything else? Okay, so before we entertain a motion to close tonight's meeting, I'd like to. Once again, remind folks that we'll be continuing distribution of COVID test kits as soon as. The kits come to us, we'll identify another day to distribute them here at town hall. And at the Red Hook Public Library. We anticipate we'll be doing this for the next several weeks. As a reminder, it's first come, first served. And if you've already received a test kit. Box which has two tests in it. You're not yet eligible for a second one. We hope to get to that point sometime soon. With that being said, we wish you all a happy new year and be safe. We wish you good health and certainly stay warm tonight. It's seven degrees here at town hall right now. So. Is there a?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to return. Any public comment before we close? The public, we have one public tonight. Any public comment? Then a motion to return. A second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Bill Hamel. Jacob Testa.
Aye.
Julia Solomon.